A little bit of pre-determining what we're about to do, but that's all fine. I think we're all going to figure it out. Before we go to a motion, I would like to ask Ms. Peterson, because our motion refers to the resolutions, if you could just quickly page us through those so that we'll understand the motion.
Yes, so the first part of the resolution requests appropriation of the county transfer. It increases the county transfer. I'm not going to read through all the numbers. The second one allows us to carry over funding that will be used to pay out purchase orders that have been encumbered and complete incomplete projects. Usually it's over the summer, but that was last summer. And then special projects and construction projects that are separate, so the grants and restricted programs fund and the bond construction fund also require that all of those funds be carried over to the next year. And then number four outlines all of the reserves that we have in the school operating fund. And then there's a fund balance in the food and nutrition services fund, which can only be used by the food and nutrition services fund. And then we have the capital reserve and the capital projects fund. And then number five is the school board's authorization to use the funding that is available, the $18.1 million as shown, to go towards the capital reserve, the Wilson project, the compensation reserve, the debt service reserve, and FY '18 requirements.
Okay, excellent. And just to clarify next steps, we'll do a motion, we'll ask for a second, and then we will see if there are amendments offered from there. Okay, just want to make sure everyone knows what's happening next. May I please have a motion?
I move that the school board adopt resolutions one through five as presented by staff.
Is there a second?
A second.
Excellent. From there, let me ask if anybody, any board members have amendments they would like to offer.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have an amendment I would like to offer. I move that the board amend the fiscal year seventeen closeout funds to include $50,000 that will go to supporting our whole child work in the areas of ensuring our students are safe and healthy, with a specific focus on pressing mental health issues as identified by our students and their families and our advisory committees, as well as APS staff and administrators. In order to give staff enough time to prepare and plan, activity should commence no sooner than September 2018 and be determined by an RFP process as needed and followed up with an evaluation. The $50,000 should be taken from the $3,797,617 allocation to our capital reserve fund for resulting capital reserve fund allocation of $3,747,617, then added to our $3,722,000 allocation for fiscal year eighteen requirements for resulting fiscal year eighteen requirements allocation of $3,772,000.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So what we will do now is see if there is discussion first on this amendment and vote on that. And Ms. Tolento, would you like to tell us a little bit about your amendment before we go to other board colleagues?
Yes, I would, thank you. So I was able to attend Bree Mathers' presentation last year. And I've been a mental health advocate for a very long time in my life, for a lot of different reasons. And it reminded me how much of a stigma it is in our community to talk about mental health, and how many people, adults, parents, families, brothers, sisters, students, are suffering from mental health illness. Over the course of the last six months, we've been trying to bring Bree Mathers into the schools, but it is challenging logistically. And so at this time where we had closeout funds and the recognition that mental health had not been overtly addressed, I had decided to ask my colleagues to see if they would support this. Some of them do not know the work of Bree Mathers, and there are a lot of other programs in the community that support this kind of education. And so through collaboration with my colleagues, a lot of discussion, collaborations with staff, we have come with this motion to put aside $50,000 to support overt mental health education and awareness to our families and students. I hope that Bree Mathers will be considered. But to me, this is a huge first step, even if it's small, in the right direction to starting these communities, these conversations in our community. We have students who are struggling with mental health issues in silence and alone, without supportive resources. We have families working alone to provide support and resources to their children. It is time to end the silence on mental health and start these conversations in our community and schools. Negative body image is also a significant issue in our secondary schools, and it often leads to eating disorders, self-harm, bullying, depression, and other mental health issues. I personally know too many teens who are cutters, who are suffering from eating disorders, who are dealing with depression and other mental health illnesses. As the Youth Risk Behavior Survey outlined, mental health is a significant concern for our students. Furthermore, the suicide rate for teens is climbing. I know that we are working on providing support systems in our schools and hoping to increase collaboration with the county to provide wraparound services. But we are still, in my opinion, missing the overt community and student conversations and awareness on this. We need to provide more intentional awareness and education with resources for our students and families, starting, in my opinion, with the issues that our students are facing with mental health concerns and body image. I am grateful for all the speakers coming out tonight to speak their truth and to break the silence on the stigma of mental health. And I am grateful for my colleagues and staff to be willing to work and find a way to bring this awareness and education. And I recognize that APS has been working on a lot of this over the years. But when it's a stigma in the community, it's very, very difficult to break that silence and make it an outward and overt conversation in our schools. And we have so many students who are suffering. So that is why I brought that today, and thank you for everyone who has worked on this and considered this motion.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there other comments on this amendment? We will have discussion on the main motion after this. Ms. O'Grady.
Thank you. If you listen to music, then you may be familiar with Logic and his song 1-800-273-8255. That song is named after the suicide prevention phone number. And the first line in that song is, "It feels like my life ain't mine." Who can relate? I know that there are students in Arlington who can relate. As I spent a lot of time over the last year speaking with members of our Arlington community, one group I spoke to is our student groups. And when I asked a particular group of students, "What's your major concern?", one of the things I heard was that they're stressed out and that mental health is taking, their mental health is taking a toll. I want those students to know that I heard you, and my vote tonight will be because I heard you. Our students have a lot of anxiety. They're balancing sports with tough classes. They're making big decisions about college. They're worried about are they liked? They're worried about whether they're getting enough likes on their social media. They're worried about, some of them, gender identity issues. Some of them are worried about whether their families will be able to stay in this country in the coming months and years. As a member of the previous strategic plan committee, I worked with my colleagues to identify supporting the whole child as a major focus for our school system. I believe that Ms. Tolento's motion today is a step to ensure that we're doing just that. I want to thank her for her leadership, and I look forward to seeing the use of this money to help our students. And I hope that this will break the silence and help our APS students who need additional support. Thank you.
Ms. Van Doren.
Ms. Tolento, thank you very much for bringing this forward, and thank you to everyone who spoke. It takes a great deal to be brave and to do that, but it's exactly what we need to do, because this needs to be a conversation that we can have and can have regularly so that every student knows that they have a place and a place to go and a place to be supported. We absolutely have to do that. Ms. Tolento and I had an opportunity this fall to sit with Avery Dick, who is a H.B. Woodlawn student, and she has a, oh, I'm not good at social media, but I think it's an Instagram account called Body Posy Avery. And she has 2,000 followers. And that is based on what she learned from the session she attended with Bree Mathers. And in listening to her talk, she talked about the different groups that have sprung up at each of the schools, support groups, child to child, student to student, to support each other going through their understanding of who they are, loving themselves, and celebrating that. And it's every gender, it's every type of student that is part of this. This isn't just for girls, this is for everybody. And I'm not going to go through all the different names, but it's everybody is involved in this. I think we need to stop the silence. Probably in 2010, I worked very hard to get someone to come to APS named Kirk Martin. Celebrate Calm was the name of the initiative. The way that I was able to do that was finally, after trying very hard to get our administration to pay for it, was through doing our PTA funding. And in many ways, I know the groups have cobbled together the money for Bree Avery. Sometimes people who aren't, don't have a PhD by their name or an educational degree are exactly those people who our students need to hear and who can relate best to our students. So I hope as we go through the process of deciding who is going to speak with our students, we listen to our students, who has made a difference to our students, who carries a message that they can hear and that they then reach out to other students and support each other. So I'm extremely supportive of this initiative. I know that this kind of support has helped me and many of my family members in the past, and I cannot support it strongly enough. The sessions simply have to shed light on a problem and an issue that is too often hidden. The light has got to be shone. It must be shone now. So I really appreciate Ms. Tolento putting this forward. It is a drop in the bucket. We have supports in the schools, but we need to connect, allow kids to have the conversation, allow parents to have the conversation with kids, and then to allow them to avail themselves of the services that are out there.
Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and thank Tanya for bringing this forward, and thanks also for the amendment, but adjusting the amendment to taking into consideration some of my thoughts and concerns about it. Clearly, mental health issues need much greater visibility and much greater attention. We need to push them up higher on our funding and activity ladder and visibility ladder. But this amendment is only for $50,000 and $50,000. It's a big land, it's a big waterfront, and $50,000 isn't going to cover all of it. So whether the effort is aimed at more positive body image or suicide prevention or any of the plethora of mental health improvement activities, they all need it. But I want to mention how important it is that we direct our efforts and then, of course, evaluate them afterwards against a desired outcome measure. So I realize how difficult it is to establish a performance outcome measure for a mental health initiative. Mental health issues will always be present. No initiative is ever going to eliminate them. But to be sure that we're investing in desired improvements, we must have a notion for this and for all of our efforts, really, of how we define success. So I'm going to be, I'll be anxious to see how staff defines success as the RFP is developed for this, and I probably should have said in the beginning, of course, I am going to support this amendment. So let me ask one question about this amendment of Leslie. The amendment calls for using an RFP as a selection mechanism. And my understanding is that we have certain dollar levels within which we use different selection mechanisms, sole source or, you know, what have you. Can an RFP be used for an initiative like this at the $50,000 level?
Yes, we actually require it.
Okay, so that's not going to be a problem to do that. And, okay, all right, so that set us, that's my question. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tolento, thank you very much for your hard work on this. And I want to thank everyone on this board, because really, there was a lot of conversation and input and sharing and work to get to this point with this. So I think we're in good shape on the amendment. I do want to make a couple of comments, though. Several things have concerned me, especially about some of the things we heard. Mental health and psychology is a priority and has been a priority for this board for several years now. And the fact that the Mental Health Task Force has not been meeting, I did not know that. We, as a board, have put in more than $1 million in ongoing funds for psychologists in our schools. I think, Dr. Murphy, we've probably hired 12, right? Weren't we doing six every year? And we were hoping to do another six this year, although we are going to have a very difficult budget year, and it's going to be difficult to continue that rollout. But we have, I believe, hired, but certainly allocated funding for at least 12 new psychologists in our system over the last two years. And that has been one of our, you know, fundamental whole child initiatives in our budget. There's not much you can do every year in, with our budget, but that was something that was, has been a priority, and we made sure it continued to happen last year when it was difficult to fit that in. So I'm a little concerned that while we have been allocating really quite a bit of funding in, again, in ongoing funds, how this isn't all coming together a little better. You know, this is a one-time allocation we're talking about, but it has to fit into a larger plan, or it's not really going to be effective in the long run. So I, you know, it's on my list of something that we need to follow up with conversation, how to build our community process back into this, how to use what we have put in place with our psychologists, and how to combine it with this kind of engagement outreach piece that we're talking about right now in this piece. So if there are no more comments on this amendment, I will call for a vote on the amendment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, the amendment passes five to zero, and let's go to the main motion. And so I think you all remember that. It was a lot of, a lot of stuff up in the slides there. So let's have a conversation about that. Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you. I do have one question about that. So a previous speaker talked about the volume of dollars being allocated to reserve buckets versus the total size of the budget and stuff. So let me ask you, are there standards or guidelines or something that you use in determining how much or what percentage a reserve bucket should have compared to the amount of money that's, that's operating in that, that topic, that field?
We do not. These, these reserves were started a number of years ago when we, when the school board saw that there were going to be some challenges in the coming years. And they decided at the time that they had funds available to set them aside to help us offset some of the increases we knew would be coming down the road. We've done that very successfully. We've used capital reserve for capital projects. We've used our future budget years reserve to help us with one-time costs in each of the last three, four, or five budget years. We've used our compensation reserve to help offset the cost of an increase in compensation for our employees. But there are no strict guidelines around any of that. I would remind the board also that the capital reserve that we have, which was shown here at 3.9 million, $31.9 million, and you're adding about $3.7 million to it this evening, we've already allocated, you have already allocated, excuse me, because it is your funding, $4 million to the Reed project. And just tonight, you authorized the transfer of, I think it was nine, nine million, just over $9 million, to the Wilson and Stratford projects. So we've already depleted about half of those reserves. And we will need those reserves for the projects that are coming up in your CIP. But no, we don't have any specific guidelines around how much we should have in reserves. We try to keep ahead of the game. We try to look down the road to see what's coming up and try to replenish the funds as we see the need.
Okay, I mean, I, I can certainly understand, you know, we've been in a very robust building program for many years, and, you know, the size of the bond issues and everything else. We have a huge amount of money going to construction, and so it would seem natural that we also have a fairly large capital reserve, you know, because of that. I was just wondering if there's a, you know, some industry standard that, that says it should be, you know, 10%, 5%, 20%, you know, something like that?
There's none. And one of the reasons for that is that we are in a unique situation here in Arlington. Many school boards are not allowed to keep the funds that they have at the end of the year. They revert to the locality. So we are benefiting from the county's generosity, shall I say, in allowing us to keep those funds and reuse them for things that we need rather than pulling them into their own reserves and using them as they see fit.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to piggyback on that for a minute, because that is part of the revenue sharing originally, the revenue sharing agreement, and then subsequent, the revenue sharing principles that Ms. Peterson identified. I do want to go back and highlight this maybe a little bit differently. And that was that we began to adopt this reserve position a number of years ago because of the economic climate that we were seeing. And we were recognizing that there were large swings in revenue going back to 2008, 2009, 2010. And I think it was at that point in time that we thought about, how do we prepare if there are large economic swings that we were seeing at that time for the future, also recognizing that we were going to be growing? And I think we've taken those necessary steps. The leadership of the board has done that, as well as staff. And while we have prepared for that, we've been in a healthy environment or a good environment, and I think that's reflective of our county government. But at the same time, we still see some economic volatility out there. And so we have to be prepared for that to keep our operations sort of sustainable and leading on an even keel.
Any other questions or comments before we vote on the main motion? Hearing none, I will, yeah, Ms. Van Doren. Oh, you were ready to, you were ready to vote, I'm sorry. Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Peterson. At this point, we have been meeting for three hours. I would like to propose a five-minute and only five-minute break. We will start in five minutes, and if you all need a little bit longer, you know, the presentation's going to start, and you can catch up.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yes, good. Hello again, everyone. Thank you all for sticking with us. What a great crowd.
I know. Troopers.
Yay, let's do the wave. All right, we have, we have completed action items at this point, and we are moving on to our information items, of which we have three. The first of these is the school calendar. Dr. Murphy?
So, let me turn to Dr. Kristi Murphy, who has this information item. She's going to talk a little bit about a recommendation for the school calendar for the upcoming school year as well as how we arrived at this recommendation. So, Dr. Murphy, I will turn to you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Good evening. Welcome, Ms. O'Grady. I am excited to present to you the 2018-19 school year recommended calendar. I'm going to give a little bit of background and then follow up with the recommendations. If you don't know, Arlington Public School has three calendars. We have one main division calendar, which also includes small nuances with Arlington Community High School and Langston High School continuation program, which will be dependent upon how the main calendar is chosen. We also have the H.B. Woodlawn and Stratford Program Calendar, which follows the main calendar, but their early release dates are different from the main calendar. We have Barcroft Elementary School, which is modified school year, and then we present the summer school calendar. When we go to build the calendar, there are a few things that are non-negotiable, and so we always start our calendar committee with having those conversations. The first is the Code of Virginia, which does not allow school, public school divisions to open prior to Labor Day weekend unless they qualify for one of the state waivers. Then we have the student instructional days. All of our students attend school for 181 days, and what we try to do is really balance the alternative instructional semester so that we do not have Arlington Community High School on Langston Continuation Program on a different schedule. Sometimes, we're not able to do that, but we really try to make it a ground rule that it's a non-negotiable. Then we have our teacher workdays. They have 194 contractual workdays. And then we also have our school board policy, which recognizes certain holidays, and then we also take in consideration the religious holidays. We do add these considerations when we're having discussion about building the calendar, and the first is making sure that we try to align our winter break and our spring break with Alexandria City, Fairfax County, Loudoun County, and Prince William County. One of the main reasons we do this is, one, for sports. If we have a different calendar, our high school students would not be able to participate because if Fairfax is out one week and Arlington is open, or vice versa, it would cause a logistical problem as far as sports. But then we also have, majority of our staff do not live in Arlington, so when, if they have children, when their children are out, we do try to keep those things into consideration. We also do try to consider the Barcroft calendar when we are building our professional learning so that those teachers and staff can have the same opportunity for professional learning as our teachers who are on the main calendar. In the past, this is actually my third year doing the calendar, the first two years, it was really interesting as a new person to have to have a committee of 50 individuals, sometimes maybe more, and it was a very long process, and we would always have a lot of comments about our calendar would come out much later than other school divisions. So, for example, all the other school divisions, our surrounding school divisions have adopted their calendar by now. We traditionally did not adopt our calendar until March. That was an inconvenience to our families and also to our employees who want to plan vacations and plan different events to be with their family. We would take the calendar, we'd take a working draft to this committee of almost 50 individuals. We would build a calendar based on what we saw last year, we would make little small tweaks, but not a lot. Then I would go around to a lot of the stakeholder groups and have conversations on what did they think about the calendar. Then we would present that to the superintendent, who then would make a recommendation for another calendar, maybe the same calendar, and then we'd start the process all over again. And again, then we would have a recommendation to send to the school board, and again, we really wouldn't finalize a calendar until March. After two years and having a lot of conversation with AEA, I did ask of the board and the superintendent, and I thank you for allowing me this opportunity to tweak the process and change it, so that we, one, could have a calendar that would come out much earlier, and we could, hopefully that would meet the needs of our family and our staff, but also to provide a different type of choice. Previously, we would have a feedback survey, and individuals would provide lots of comments, but those comments didn't necessarily change the calendar. So, what we decided this year was we went into our calendar process with a much smaller committee. We spent two hours, and we came up with three draft calendars to put out. We opened up a feedback forum for everyone to choose, to give us feedback on the calendar, whether they liked it, whether they didn't like it, whether they could live with it, not to vote, but to give us feedback. And I'm here tonight to bring forward those recommendations. One of the thing about the, the things about the committee, I wanted to say to make it smaller, we were very strategic in making sure that we had elementary representation from our parents as well as the Teacher Council on Instruction and AEA. So, we did ask those respective groups to bring forth individuals to be on the committee. Again, this is where we are tonight with our new process, 2018-19 calendar development. We met in November. Our goal was to develop two. We came out with three. We posted those three options. I'm going to go through some slides to provide you some feedback, and then I will put forth the recommendation from the calendar committee. I added this slide to just give, when we put the survey out, we also put up the differences in the calendars. Calendar one and two went back to pre-service week for our teachers and our 10-month employees, a five-day pre-service week, Monday through Friday. We kept the two full days of elementary parent-teacher conferences in one and two. The winter break, I'm going to skip a little bit to come back to the differences, but the winter break, both remained eight days. Elementary parent-teacher conferences in the spring, both were a day and a half. High school, as you can see, would end on June 17th, and middle school, the 19th, and then elementary, the 20th. The big difference between calendar one and calendar two was Columbus Day or Veterans Day. We had the conversation, one of those due to teacher contractual days of 194 days, they needed to come to work on one of those days, and so the question was, would they have rather attend on Columbus Day for professional learning and students would be off, or would we flip it and have Veterans Day where it would be a professional learning day, and either way, the students would have it off? Those were the main differences between calendar one and two. Calendar three has a seven-day pre-service week so that we could have a two-week winter break. In addition, the conference days for elementary school for the spring and fall will be a day and a half. And the end of the year, instead of ending on a Thursday for our elementary students would end on a Friday, middle school would end on a Friday, and high school would end on a Wednesday. Those were the options that were put out, and the, as you can see the results, and I'm realizing from this distance, it's a little small, but as you can see, 92% of most of our APS students actually liked calendar three. I wonder why. But we have the results, the feedback, we asked whether, did you like it? Can you live with it? Or you do not like it? And I think it's very clear what the preference was from our parents of APS students, our staff, our students, and community members. I'm pretty excited about this slide, and that's because in the past, we traditionally would have a total number of responses of about 800. As you can see, we have 4,000 responses and 4,412 for calendar three. It could have been. It could have been, but the number of students that participated was pretty overwhelming compared to what we had seen in the past. So, I think it's exciting to know that our students really had an opportunity to provide us a different type of feedback to go in and select, and next year, I would love to have a little bit more feedback on what, how many were elementary, how many were middle, and how many were high school. But as you can see, we had about a total of 4,000 responses for each, and you can see the breakdown between the parents, the staff, the students, and community members. So, with that said, we are here tonight to present calendar three, which would provide with a two-week winter break. Our staff would return on Thursday, August 23rd. Our students would return after Labor Day. We would end on, staff would end on the same day as elementary and middle, which is June 21st, which is a Friday. Two-week winter break, one-week spring break. We've also presented the Barcroft recommendations. You'll notice that they end a different day than majority of the main calendar, and that's due to one of the days in their calendar, in their school year where they'll be in school compared to our calendar, or the main calendar. And then summer school, as you can see, staff would come for their pre-service day on July 3rd. Students would start that following Monday, which is July 8th. Our elementary program would end August 2nd, and our high school would end August 9th. And those are 2018-19 calendar information items.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we will vote in two weeks? We see this for action in two weeks? Is that correct?
It will be an action item in two weeks, yes.
Okay. So, at this point, we will just have questions and comments from the board.
We have two speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Speakers. How could I forget? That's why there are people still sitting here.
Mr. Josh Fogle.
It's Josh Fogle, but I haven't spoken before. I want to thank APS for taking seriously the need for reforming the calendar development process, but before everyone pats themselves on the back, I'd like to point out, there was some administrative gerrymandering that prevented AEA from preventing their first high school teacher choice from being on the committee, responding that a teacher from a comprehensive high school would only be acceptable. I hope in the future, AEA is free to fill the committee, members that they're given with leveled members that are deemed appropriate. I was once told, get on the committee, and, Mr. Lander, I tried. I will further point out publicly that the only calendar option that allowed for a two-week winter break was the calendar option that had your staff coming back for seven days of pre-service. That is not a coincidence from those who I talked to that were on the calendar committee. Anyone drawing conclusions from the survey that the high level of satisfaction with this option came from anything other than two weeks of winter break is not in touch with how it played in the community. Therefore, I will ask the school board to continue to monitor the flexible professional development model mandated by this board to ensure that more opportunities arise for staff to use their non-instructional hours in the ways that best fit their learning needs. Professional development, and all learning in fact, should not be somewhere you go, but something you do. Let's ensure that these seven days of pre-service are not only, quote, "used well," but produces meaningful progress, and those two ends are not necessarily the same. And let's also hope that when you bring your staff in for seven days of pre-service, that we are focusing on the whole employee as well as the whole child. On behalf of the 1,800 members of the Arlington Education Association, thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Ingrid Gant.
Good evening. Protocol already being established. In 2016, I stood in front of you asking you to allow, this was around the same time, February, March, asking you to allow and support the APACs model that AEA submitted that would allow flexibility for professional development. In 2017, I came back, and you heard me. You also allowed me to serve on the calendar committee, where the process was overwhelming. My input wasn't felt, as Dr. Murphy had already said tonight. I felt as if my progress fell on deaf ears, and the progress was definitely long and wasted my time. This year, I agree with Josh Fogle, who just spoke about the professional learning days and having choice that doesn't require adults to have to come into an APS building. But I'm here to just say thank you for not only hearing me and listening to me, but this year's process provided some input for me to see that I recommended last year that we have some options so that we have a choice, and you listened. This process this year allowed us to come together all scales in dialogue about what would work for our students and our staff, and you heard me. This process this year came earlier. Dr. Murphy, Kristi Murphy, and I decided to make sure, we voted and had things that come out to give our input back for Dr. Murphy to bring to you tonight, and you heard me. So, although the process, the calendar that I would recommend didn't make the cut, I do allow you, I do thank you for allowing me to go through the process of being heard, because a lot of times when we go through things and our input is there, and we don't feel like we're being heard, it's a waste of our time. I can't say that this year, so I ask that you listen to what the community and the employees and the staff are saying, and I'm not going to say, listen to the recommendation of calendar three, but I do thank you for listening to us as a whole. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So, at this point, board colleagues, do you have questions or comments? Mr. Goldstein?
I do, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. A couple of kind of clarifying questions. I noticed in the recommended, I guess it's calendar three?
Yes.
Is the recommended one, that the teacher's last day will be the student's last day, June 21st, something like that?
Yes, for the, for the regular school year.
Right.
The elementary students and middle school students and the teachers are all set to end on Friday, June 21st.
Was there any discussion about those teachers who need to vacate their rooms because their rooms will be used for summer school, which typically takes, you know, an amount of time to either take down or cover up, you know, wall materials and put things away and, you know, blah, blah, blah? Also happening on the last day that the students are there?
We did not have that discussion during the meeting.
Okay. Do we know anything about the fidelity of the calendar questionnaire? Were people indeed able to vote multiple times, or was it restricted by IP address?
We did not restrict the calendar access by IEP, I mean, IEP. Ha ha, I am tired. By IP address.
Or zip code, or anything? Were no identifying?
No, we did not.
By, for respondents? Okay. And what was the time period for the community response?
It was about two weeks. It was open December 20, December 4th to December 21st.
Okay, thanks. Can you go to slide nine, please?
Sure. Dr. Murphy, do you mind sliding? Thank you.
Okay, maybe, no, you added a slide.
Yes, I did.
So, what was this? So, maybe it's slide 10, then?
This slide was added.
That was added, yeah. Try slide 10. Okay, thanks. Oh, so the summer school schedule that's on this is really the next fiscal year, right? It's really fiscal '20.
So, it will be FY '20, but we present the summer school for 2019, yes.
Okay, so, in a couple more info items, we're going to hear about a changed summer school schedule for this coming summer.
Correct.
But there aren't plans to have that same changed model days?
So, I see Dr. Nachas up my peripheral, who's like, ready to go on the microphone, but she's going to follow up and provide more information to you when she presents summer school about the recommendations for 2018 and how that ties into possible recommendations for 2019.
Summer of 2019.
Summer of 2019. So, if you could hold those, hold those questions until then, she'll bring it home.
Okay. And, okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Else? Ms. Talanto?
I just wanted to thank you and staff. I know that you translated the survey in Spanish, and we were able to get that to a lot of our Spanish-speaking parents to respond, and I know that they did that, so I just wanted to say thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
And when you did the calendar survey.
Thanks. Ms. O'Grady?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Kristi Murphy, for working on making this a much more streamlined process, it seems to please many people who were involved.
Thank you for, AEA for always pushing me.
I do have a question. In my, I don't know, 20 years of being an APS parent, I think in my memory, this might be the first time we'd had a two-week, am I wrong?
This would be about the third.
Oh, the third, okay. Okay, well, I just wanted to know, I didn't remember that, but I just want to know, did you hear from parents who might be concerned about the length of the break and whether or not, we have any thoughts in place for trying to ensure that, for parents who may have to go back to work before their kids go back to school, what kind of options might be available for them?
Right. We did not hear about the concern about the length of two weeks. In fact, we have, most individuals that we've had comments from actually support it, but we do have opportunities through the Department of Rec. They do have a schedule for summer break, they do have a schedule for winter break. So, I was noticing on their website today that they have not put that information up yet, so I'm wondering also if they wait for us to put our calendar out to wrap it around. There are also private vendors or private child cares that have that, those options for, to provide services to students doing childcare during spring and winter.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I can follow up with them, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, you know, one of the joys of seeing topics come around year after year is that we do get to see the improvement and the things, the responsiveness to community concerns, and I definitely recall concerns about the process, and this new one looks like a really positive step, so congratulations. That's, takes a lot of- Thank you for supporting it. Truly, thank you. Sure. So, I just have a couple of quick comments. First, I just want to ask a basic math question, because I'm not getting it. Why does the two-week winter break mean extra pre-service?
Why does the two-week winter break mean extra pre-service, in-service, pre-service days? They're different, so.
Right, let me see.
Ms. Gant wants to answer.
Let's see if I can point it out.
Do they have to go together, I guess, is maybe the question.
Right. It's when you sit down and you have to count out one hundred and ninety-four days for staff.
Yeah.
If you notice, let me put it this way, and I'm going to try. For the winter break for calendar one, you'll see that the winter break is only eight days. So the teacher workdays are spread a little bit more out in the calendar. With the two-week, in order to give a two-week winter break, you have to make adjustments in the calendar for when staff.
Fewer places to put those things, and so you had to stack them at the beginning.
You have to stack them in the beginning because you, or either you stack them at the end. But if you stack them at the end, then
Not helpful.
They're almost, they stay later in June, and so which one is more beneficial?
Okay. So, and, you know, as I was mentioning, the joys of things coming back year after year. You know, we have been talking about flexible professional development. That's been a real interest the board has had. So maybe that's something we can take a step forward on this year in some sense as we continue these conversations. So let's think about that, and then I just have a couple of quick comments. There has been inconsistency in our schools about homework over breaks. I know my kids went to Yorktown, for example, and they, at least under the previous principle, did not allow homework over spring break, winter break. It's fantastic, great for the, and summer break. Yes, that's right, even summer. And other schools, it's different. I wish that we would maybe think about being more consistent about that. It's really great for families to take a break from school. That's my personal opinion on that. I know that others might have a different opinion, but I hope that we can talk about that as, I know it's not a calendar topic, but it's the two-week winter break.
It's related to the calendar.
Part of the significance and beauty of having that break is, you know, the true break. We were just talking about mental health. There are a lot of reasons why it matters. And also, just for anyone who may still be watching, adding the religious holidays is something that happens later in our calendar process. Just want to remind people, when they saw the survey, a few people wondered why we didn't have the religious holidays in there as we did this past year. But that's because they get added when we do the final product, not at this stage.
Correct. We do not put the religious holidays on the working calendar, but we do put it on the calendar that's disseminated to all staff, all families, communities, students, everyone.
Okay. We will see you in two weeks when we take action on the calendar.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll go on to our next item. And I misspoke earlier. We actually had four information items, of which we've now completed one. Our next one is the school board policy review process update. Dr. Murphy.
Yes, let me turn here now to Ms. Julia Burgos, our chief of staff, who in collaboration with the school board clerk and a committee, I also see Mr. Matt Smith here, have been working on the policy review process. The board is aware that we actually started this last year as part of the three-to-five-year action plan, so we're continuing it. And what Ms. Burgos is bringing us this evening is to continue to keep policies in front of us, give you some idea of some of our timelines. We have made some adjustments with how those timelines look and then what information you'll be seeing as we move forward. So she's sharing this really then for the board to take action in two weeks so we can put all these gears in motion. So Ms. Burgos, I'll turn to you.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. And I want to thank the board for really allowing the policy review team to get together. I think it's actually been kind of exciting because we've really, the team, the staff that was picked to work on the team has really, have delved in and really worked on this and I think has spent a lot of time. It was nice that Matt was here tonight. He was one of the people that led our numbering process, which was great. So I just wanted to thank you for entrusting us with that. And I'll talk a little bit about how we got there and then some of the recommendations. And I want to thank the team as well, and Melanie, who's been a real help to us as well, you know, as we moved through this process and getting us together. So this is obviously an update to the August two thousand seventeen presentation that I gave. And we started our work in September. So just as a reminder, we have one hundred and ninety-two policies. We added one since we met, which was the threat assessment. And so in some of the research that we did, we saw that we're actually pretty much in line with a lot of the other jurisdictions. Like, for instance, Fairfax has two hundred and fourteen policies. So we're not that far, even though they're much larger counties, so that was an interesting thing that we saw. So we're going to be obviously adding some things. We know that in the next year. And then as we, with one of the recommendations that I had, we may wind up adding some more. So let me talk a little bit about, again, as a refresher, about the structure and the charge of the team. So obviously, it includes the school board clerk, which is an integral piece of the policy review team. Any recommendations that we're making, does it work for the school board? Does it work for the office? It's comprised of one representative from each department. And that's important because now the ownership of the policies moves from one individual to a cross-representative group. So we're able to essentially cross the Ts and dot the Is and really take a sort of a holistic approach of how one policy affects many different departments and the school division as a whole. And so the charge of the team is to determine the priorities for two thousand and seventeen and beyond, which was what we'll be talking about tonight, and mapping the calendar for completion. And then as we kind of complete this phase, is to review the overlapping content and cross-referencing with other policies as we continue our work throughout the year. So once we kind of finish this phase of making these recommendations, the team will get to work. In fact, Dr. Nachas, she sent us our first policy this week that we'll get to start working on. So we're excited about that. So on the team, obviously Melanie and myself, representing the superintendent's office, we have Dr. Jeanette Allen from Administrative Services, Helena Machado, which is from Facilities and Operations, David Webb, Finance and Management, Ellen Kennedy for Human Resources, Matt Smith for Information Services. And a new member to our team is Darryl Johnson, who is actually stepping in for Jen Harris on School and Community Relations, which is great because I understand he has a great policy background. So he'll add a nice, fresh perspective to our work. And Kathleen Braga from Teaching and Learning. So we have a nice cross-representative group. So I'm going to bring this back up. I know we talked about this before, but I think what's important here is that we'll be reviewing the policies before they actually go to the community. I think one of the things that was important was that we heard things from the community that should have been included or could have been thought about in the policies. This allows us to kind of make those changes and make those recommendations before they actually go to the community stakeholder groups so that when they finally come to the school board, all of these things have been thought of. And it also provides the community stakeholder groups with less to make changes for. So it actually shortens the process and makes things a lot more streamlined. So I think having this team in place will help us to do that. And we'll tweak things along the way. And I'm going to talk a little bit about how we're going to involve some of our stakeholders to make sure that this process actually is working. So obviously, this is the list of community stakeholder groups. I know you've seen this very busy chart. But this basically illustrates the teams and the stakeholder groups that we'll be approaching as we go through the process. And so, and this will be tweaked based on some of the recommendations that we have tonight. So one of the big things that we want to do is we want to subscribe to the VSBA service. And there's a couple of reasons for that. We had considered this in the past, and we revisited this. This will help us to stay on track. This is what we feel. We've done a lot of research around this. It provides APS with access to all policies, included in the policy manual. What's great about that is that we can see if there's gaps in some of our policies. We can see if there's some language in some of our policies that could be added. But what we really love is that the annual legislative updates will come to us with redline, with redline policies. So they'll be able to give us the annual legislative updates, and we'll be able to make those changes much more efficiently. And that helps us to be more on track. It also provides APS an opportunity to consider, as I mentioned, developing new policies if we see things that may be missing or things that we want to include based on the VSBA policies. And then it also gives us some wording that may be more appropriate for some of the policies that we have. So it gives the staff a starting point in many cases. And in other cases, when we want to make changes to policies, it gives us some of that language that's already been vetted and, you know, is legally appropriate. It also provides a policy index along with those annual updates. And we want to have alignment with the VSBA categories, which I'll talk a little bit about a little bit. The reason for that is it provides a hierarchical system. Currently, our numbering system is not as hierarchical as we want it to be. And so it doesn't allow us to have ease of use with our annual review process. And so like, you know, you kind of pick a number that's next, and it's not really seamless. And so that's one of the things that we want to change. So that's a big thing. We want to subscribe to the service, and we want to make that recommendation to the board. We also want to reorganize the policies into the following ten VSBA categories. And this will be very important for alignment. What's nice about this is that when people are looking for policies, they're looking for it by topic rather than department, than our departments. They're looking at it for things that they're used to looking for, personnel, board governance, and things like that. So major topics. And then one of the reasons that we wanted to go this way as well is because we saw that there was redundancy in some of our policies in separate areas or there were policies that lived in places that didn't necessarily make sense to the customer. You know, like if people were looking for something, it might be in general administration where they would think that it would be in support services. So those kinds of things will be able to fix when they're not department-focused rather than topical. And then the numbering system that we're proposing is very close to the VSBA system. And the reason that we're not going completely with the VSBA system, and I'll explain this, is that they have a lettering system. So their policies are like GMDA. And that's not something that we're used to in this community, so we didn't want to go too far off the beaten path. So what we're proposing is that we add the letter that corresponds with the VSBA, but that we keep a numbering system, which is what people are used to. But what will happen is we want to make sure that our policies are aligned with the VSBA policy. So when we have to do changes, when we have an internal system that we can track things. So I know it sounds a little confusing, but for instance, G two thirteen. So in this case, the VSBA policy would be GBM, okay? We don't want to use that. So here, we would say G for the category. Two would be the second letter of the alphabet. They would use the B. There's M as the thirteenth letter, so we'll add the thirteen. So it aligns perfectly with the VSBA policy, but no, it'll be kind of naked to the, you know, to the user of that. But we'll know that internally that that policy corresponds with that VSBA number. So it just makes it a lot easier. People are used to seeing that, and it, you know, it's a lot like the current scheme. So that's kind of why we're going with this, rather than the letters. We all kind of cringe with the letters. It's just too hard to remember, you know, like GMDA or BMC, you know, like it's just not, not easy. So that's kind of what we went with that. And then also, we want to improve the formatting of policies. We want them to be all consistent. So we're recommending, and I know that we shared this with the board, and I'll kind of show a sample on the next slide, but specific fonts, margins, headings. But most importantly, we want to add the history of each policy, which we currently don't have. One was originally adopted, the revision, the review, and the former APS policy number. So if somebody has a policy number that's in an old book and they're looking at it, they can make reference to that, to that policy. It'll still be there. And then also list any legal references. We don't have that on all the policies, any code changes and things that are relevant to that particular policy. So we're going to make sure every single policy has that, ones that have recently been adopted, as well as new ones that are going to be coming, being reviewed. So this is a sample format. I know it's difficult to see, and I know we shared this with the board. But this is obviously very stylistic and adds a lot of the elements that I just discussed. And then the proposed review revision schedule, which I know we shared with the board as well in December, and I know we, thank you for the feedback that some of you received, some of the things that you caught, and we will be making some of those adjustments. But what this really helps us to do is to stay on a five-year cycle. So that's why the calendar goes all the way out to twenty twenty-four. So something that we recently reviewed will be, is already on the calendar to be reviewed at a later date. So we don't miss those policies. They stay on the timeline, and then we'll make those adjustments. One of the things that we will be doing as part of the policy review teamwork is, over the summer, we'll look at this calendar again. Where are we? Are we on track? If we're not, propose a new calendar to the board so that every year, we have a new calendar with new changes, new times, and we can make adjustments as needed. We also want to allow for some flexibility based on, you know, the board's requests, any legislation, code changes, and things like that. So that also allows us to build in some of that as we review the calendar every year. And so I know I gave some samples of what the calendar looks like that I gave to you. But essentially, we've recategorized everything. Some of this stuff will change because when we actually subscribe to the VSBA service, we kind of like, we kind of guessed what some of these policies will fit into. But when we have those VSBA policies in our hands, some of it will change. So we'll share that with the board when we have that in our hands. And what this schedule allows for as well is that we'll, we're hoping to have two to three policies per meeting based on the school calendar. We had a much more aggressive timeline in place, but we figured we'll probably have like five to six policies per meeting, and that would just be really overwhelming. And so having it on a much more manageable timeline, two to three per meeting, that's what we're, that's what this calendar allows us to do. And of course, making adjustments as needed when things come up, and we'll add them on as needed. Okay. One of the things we were really excited about was that we are going to be able to improve our search capability on policies. So currently, on our school board webpage, we have all of our policies listed. You have to click on the policy by date. It doesn't allow you to put in, you know, if you're looking for something on homework, it doesn't allow you to put in homework and find all the policies that have referenced the homework. So we do have that capability on Board Docs. And so when you search on Board Docs, you can put in homework, and it'll show you everything that has that. We knew, we didn't know we had this capability. We kind of found it in our research. So we'll be changing the website on the school board page to actually direct people to Board Docs. What's nice about that is that you'll be able to search by name, by number, any format. And then we'll have some instructions that we list on the page for people who are not used to doing that, but will really show people how to navigate the page and find things. So that will help us to communicate the changes. And it will also include the former APS policy number. So it'll have the new number, and then in parentheses, it'll have the old number, so in case people are not as familiarized yet. So we're kind of thinking about that. So one of the things that we know is really important is to communicate the changes because people are going to look to find these things, and they're not used to it. So we're going to develop a communications plan to inform the internal and external audiences on the new system. We'll add the key instructions and messages, as I mentioned, on the website to guide visitors on navigating the new search tool and the numbers. And this is what I was referring to before. We want to work with some stakeholder groups to try it out. You know, here's the new system. Does it work? What are some tweaks we could make before we kind of do a major rollout? Because I think the search functions and indexing, we want to make sure it makes sense. And so some of our groups that are going to be using this, our staff and our community, we want to make sure that it's functioning the way that we want it to and make tweaks as needed before we finalize the webpage. So that's, that's what leads us to our next steps, where we need your help in adopting these strategies. And so adopting the new numbering system and the formatting template, you know, that's, I know that's going to take some work on our end, and I'll talk about that in a second. Approval of the new policy process and the renumbering and formatting for, in the next two weeks, we really want to get this started so the next phase of the team can get into place. And subscribing to the policy service, we want to get that underway as well. And of course, approving the adoption schedule. And I know we've received a little bit of feedback in terms of some changes that we want to make. And of course, you know, we're happy to make changes as needed. One of the things that I know we got a question about was how will we change the numbering system? There's a lot of considerations because we have documents that have numbers. We have lots of things that we need to link to as well. So we want to do a sweeping change of the numbering, but we want to do it in a way that doesn't disrupt everything. And so we're taking a careful approach on doing that, and that will be part of the communication process as well as working with our stakeholder groups and what would work for them. So the numbering changes will take place over a period of time. We're not going to just turn the switch tomorrow and then everything's just changed that way. So that's pretty much my presentation. Happy to take any questions at this time.
Okay, excellent. First, let me ask if we have speakers?
No speakers.
No speakers. Okay. Board colleagues, questions and comments? Looks like everyone, let's, Ms., okay. Were you, Ms. Lanto? Yeah, let's start. Let's start with you.
So I know this is a new process, and this caught my attention because I was looking at a policy that we're looking at later today. We have some policies, and I say some because I think there's another policy that we did this for that we're saying we'll review in three years, where it's not the traditional five years. And you don't have to have an answer. I know that this is an intensive process already, but if you don't have a mechanism already, a separate spreadsheet or a mechanism to incorporate those policies that have to come in at a three-year cycle or a two-year cycle, or a cycle that's not the traditional five-year cycle as we move forward so that we are, you know, meeting the need. I think this next policy may be two years. I know we had another one that's three. So I know that you guys are developing this, so as you move forward, if you could continue, just keep that in mind and figure out how to help us stay on top of that. For this, you know, whether it's spreadsheet, okay, here's the one that get reviewed every two years, here's the one that, and then implement that into our review cycle, just as you think that. And then the question that I, I think I just, I must be late because I just lost. So if it comes back to me, I will come back to you, but that was the big one. I know, sorry. Okay, thank you.
No problem. I think one of the things that some, one of the board members had asked about was flexibility and maybe even making recommendations as we move forward as you see things that need to be put into the cycle. to be put into the cycle. You know, we can absolutely make those adjustments. I think this is kind of like our proposal, based on the department's suggestions, but certainly, if there are things that you want to be moved earlier, if there are things that we want to make notation, this, this particular policy has to be reviewed every two years, as opposed to every five years, we can certainly put those notes in, it's not a big deal at all.
Great, great. And that way, I don't know if we have to work with our school board office staff to keep a different system on, but we'll have to have that discussion, and maybe that's something you bring to your policy team meeting. And then I did remember my next question.
Okay, good.
When you come back on the day of our vote, will we have an updated schedule?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll be able to see some of the adjustments that we?
That you proposed, yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
And if you have anything else in the meantime, absolutely send it, we'll make those adjustments.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Van Dorn.
Thank you, Ms. Burgos. We really actually started this process two years ago, and I know that we've been refining it, and I appreciate that. My question is that there are some policies that are put off rather far into the future that I think are important to take on sooner than that. We've been, since the special ed evaluation, been talking about the Arlington Tiered System of Support, and we went back and forth for some time with a policy on A T S S that has never come forward to the board. I know that there's discussion about combining policies, and I'm fine with that, but that, together with also a policy on inclusion, are lacking, and it is confusing for our staff and our community. Are we doing these things or not? Where are they in policy? How are they supposed to happen? What's the P I P? It's missing. So, I see, as I tried to pull them up, I'm having difficulty with my computer, on the schedule, it looks like some of those are not scheduled to come up till 2020, and I actually think we need them to come sooner. And I mentioned earlier tonight that I think we really need to update that facilities policy, which refers to the A D A and add universal design, and it's something I'd like our, my colleagues to discuss. And that, again, is also not scheduled to come up to the end of 2019. So I'm just pointing out a couple that I think, to the extent that we can discuss these and find the right time, and obviously, we have to have consensus among ourselves, but I just want you to know that those are ones that I think, particularly instructional ones, they get in the way of our doing business well at the school level and with the students.
Thank you. I've definitely made notations on these, and I'm happy to bring back any recommendations to make the, I mean, this is, I guess what I, basically saying is that this is your calendar, and you can make any changes that you want, and I can bring them back to the departments, and we can change them in the lineup. I think it was really more like a proposal, based on some of the departments where they felt that they could make these changes, but certainly, we can move them earlier. It's not, it's not a big issue.
And I'll also note that the school board policies themselves, what I call the ten policies, are not in this, and we really need to get those back in here. Ms. Lunt and I spent a vast amount of time earlier this year redrafting them, and I'd like to get those back on, and I think we're planning to consider those this coming summer. But they're, in many ways, the bedrock about how we do business, and they need, they really need to be updated. So I'm just reminding us that we, we really have to get to those. It's like the shoemaker making the shoes. We've got to, got to get our shoes on.
Yeah. Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to start with a fundamental question, and I'm not sure you're the one that I should be directing that, but, do we have to approve this? I mean, these seem like mechanical changes to the process. They're not substantive policy changes. They're numbering and, you know, with references and stylistic and stuff like that. Is this, is this something we have to approve? Does anybody know?
I, I know that we have to adopt the policies, and we have to update them within five years, and every year at an organizational meeting, we formally readopt all of our policies. So it's something that by code, we have to keep our policies up to date. So then, to me, a subset of that, in, because I have been looking into this for a couple of years, and was really, some of our policies go back to early 2000s, some to 1999. So, we need to get in compliance.
I think you're asking if, does this plan, though, is this?
Correct.
This plan that we're being brought a school board action, you know, do we, do we, do we need to act on what you're bringing us as a plan?
Yeah, that's my question.
That's your question?
I will say that I think we thought about putting it as a consent item, but then it wasn't going to be as transparent. So that's one, number one, and number two, was that we wanted to bring it forth, because it was a change that we were proposing to the school board for your policies. You know, it's not our policies, it's yours. So that was the reason we put it on for information and action. But that was just our thinking, that it would be, and I know we talked about it with Melanie. She originally had it on consent, then we moved it. So that's kind of where the thinking was, but certainly, it really was just us making a recommendation.
You know, I think officially, no, you wouldn't have to take action on it, but I think because of the significance of it, and because of the structural changes, that we need to make sure that everyone has an awareness, that the board is aligned with what we are moving forward with, and that it's very, very clear. I mean, some of the changes that we're recommending here are pretty broad and, and pretty sweeping. I think, though, what Ms. Van Dorn brings up is, you know, when there are legislative changes, we have to make those adjustments, we have to be on a five-year cycle, so there are some things. I think this goes a little bit beyond that, but I think it's a good thing for the board to take action on.
Okay, all right, thank you. I guess that answers my question. Can you go to slide 10, please?
Sure.
And so, okay, the formatting, all right, so would it be possible to add, as you change the formatting, and you're, I see you're adding history, you're adding legal references, can you add a point of contact, name, or even a point of contact office, when, for people, for readers who then have questions, to be able to know how to contact someone, a phone number, an email address, or, you know, something like that?
I think, you know, I can certainly bring this back to the team for discussion, but one of the things, I think changing to every single policy might be a little tricky, because if people leave, and we're going to be constantly making adjustments, and then they might not always be up to date. But certainly, we can think about a way to do that. One of the suggestions that I'm thinking about right off the bat is that, on the instructions page, in the very beginning, when people kind of click, we can have a departmental contact.
That might work.
So that way, if there's any questions about that particular topic, you know, they can call that person, so that that way they have somebody to talk to.
Yeah. We could use my cellphone.
I mean, they are, they are school board policies, there should be a board member who's contacted. We're in charge of policies, so we can rotate. I'll take two chapters, you take two, chair can take three.
So I guess I really don't have any more questions.
Okay.
Oh, no, no, I do. All right, thank you. I'd appreciate it if you, the team would think about that. And definitions and acronyms also, where they're being used, so, I don't know if you want to do that centrally, or in each policy, or something like that.
Are you talking about like having a glossary of terms, of something where people understand?
Sure.
Certain parts or certain language about the policies in general?
Right.
Okay. We can definitely talk about that.
And can you go to slide 13?
Okay.
Okay, so are you talking about a search capability, what, based on keywords, or something like that?
Yes, that's what I was talking about before, that when we, on Board Docs, you'd be able to put in a name or a number, it's much easier to find than now, you don't have that ability to do that.
Okay, thanks. And how about slide 15? Okay, so, all right, so you're talking about a five-year policy review and adoption cycle, and as you said, that would mean something like two or three policies per board meeting.
Per meeting.
But that's if you take the 192 and divide it by about 40 weeks, and two per month, and all that. But we have a huge back, well, we have a backlog of policies that have not been reviewed and revised during the five-year timeframe that it should. So given those, which I would assume would probably be higher on your list of priorities to start with, is it manageable? Is the workflow manageable? Are we going to be able to take those past ones and do them all next year or something to get us onto a five-year cycle?
One of the things that we talked about was, if we had policies that were very simple, like we have some policies that are like one or two words, we could put them through on consent and not, if you didn't want to have a discussion. But I think that's something that the board will have to consider, if that's something that you want to do, if it's very minor changes, if it's like, for instance, that we have a bunch of policies and instruction that are, that say instruction, and they need to say teaching and learning. Maybe the content doesn't change, but we're just changing the name of the department. So those would be easy ones, and we could put those through a lot faster. But that's kind of like a second phase, as we start reviewing the policies and seeing how many of those exist, we can definitely make that recommendation and get things faster. I think one of the things that we were thinking about was that if we put too many policies on the plate at once, it would just be really overwhelming to do them, and that you wouldn't have this chance for rich discussion for each of the policies that were being changed. So the two to three was taking into consideration how many board meetings we actually have per year, even though we have 12 months, but we don't have board meetings every month, we don't have as many. So that was kind of where the two to three number came from. We kind of divided it out, based on the policies that we have.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I just, my last point is, I know this isn't part of the substance of your presentation, and probably wouldn't be the work that you're talking about, but I want to raise the idea with my colleagues about us approving P I Ps, to be sure that the practice, the implementation outlined in the P I P is consistent with the intent of policy. So that's, I think, a conversation we should be having amongst ourselves sometime in the near future. Thank you.
I do want to make a point that, as we bring policies forward to the board, the P I Ps will be also revised at the same time. So there will no, it won't be like, oh, we'll deal with the P I P later. Everything is going to be done as a package. So it was going to be more like, here's the policies to the board, here's the P I Ps to the superintendent, and then, you know, they would be obviously shared with the board in addition, because a lot of times, it's taking the language out of the policy and putting it into the P I P, because it doesn't belong in the, in the policy. So it would be, it would show the alignment as we put the policies forward.
If you don't like something in the P I P, it's presumably because the guidance in the policy wasn't clear.
Right, exactly, yeah.
About how that should play out, so we can also work through that as we?
So we'll definitely show the alignment.
As we go, yes. Ms. O'Grady.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for all this work, to you, Ms. Burgos, and for the other members of the committee. It's a lot of work coming up with new ways to define thing, or, well, to number things, and I just wanted to say thank you, because I can tell you guys put a lot of thought into this, and I'm excited to see how it continues to move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is excellent work. The one thing that I want for us to work on, the calendar and the schedule has, has been raised. We've been doing a lot of things as a board, as you all know, you can tell by this meeting, and I will admit that the question of how we feel about that schedule, and if there are priorities that board members have, we haven't really had those conversations yet. So, I'm, we are going to try to figure out how, in the next two weeks, we can talk about this. I, I was trying to think, if every board member maybe mentions what they think should be moved up, but then that's going to be like, if everyone has five ideas, that's 25 things, that's too many to move to the, this year, but somehow, if we can figure out if there are some adjustments that, you know, the majority of the board would like to do, we'll, we'll try to figure out some system for, thinking about whether there should be adjustments. And if you have a draft, an updated draft, it sounds like?
It's just like three policies that, that we need to make changes on the dates, like the naming of facilities, and I think two others, I have them in the notes. But, you know, we, I can definitely provide that to you as soon as possible. I needed to confer with Administrative Services about two of them, because they're, they're, they're going to be making the changes, I wanted to talk to them about that. But the other one's an easy change, and so I can get something to you right away, and you can start looking at it, but it was just those three. And I, you know, I do want to say, like, I know we talked about this in August, but we did review and adopt and revise 50 policies within the last year and a half, so, you know, this is obviously a continuation of that work, and I think with this, and with this new system, we'll be able to streamline things a lot faster, and so we can celebrate even more success.
Definitely. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have bad news to share, which is that the video is running out, and we need to take a five-minute break, so that we can change the video. So.
Thank you.
Stretch a little bit. Right back at it here are, let's see, the next information item is a revision, speaking of policies, is a revision of School Board Policy 45-2, Acceptable Use of Electronic Networked Resources and Internet Safety. Dr. Murphy.
I'm glad you're back, Dr. Natress.
Like magic.
Like magic. All right, so I think I made mention of this with my action plan update, that we would be bringing forward two policies having to do with technology. This is the first of those two. I believe you're going to do the introduction, and then Mr. Smith is going to do some follow-up with the detail, and this is an information item this evening.
That is correct. So this is actually a policy conversation that we started last spring with a variety of groups, including the Superintendent's Advisory Committee for Technology. And then, this fall, we started doing a bit more specific work on a few things, because we've had a lot of conversation around acceptable use with technology. And so this fall, we actually looked at five of our policies with some community members, as well as some staff groups, to really try to determine what our key goal is when we're thinking about all of our policies around technology and technology usage. And so through the review of those five policies, we have decided that we're really going to look in two buckets. One bucket, we're bringing to you this evening, which is really very specific to our internet and filtering guidelines that are really mandated by the state. So what you're going to see tonight is the policy around some of that state work. We are also in the process of working with staff and community members on the broader policy that deals with acceptable use, which is a lot of the conversation that we know the community wants to have, really around things like digital citizenship, things like internet safety, rights and responsibilities of students, how does technology usage look in the classroom? And we felt like that policy in particular needed a lot of conversation with staff and community members before bringing it forward. And so we're going to, this evening, present the one that really has to do much more with specific guidelines and state regulations, and then we will bring forward later this spring, as Dr. Murphy shared earlier, the policy related to a lot of those other things that I just referenced. So Matt Smith has been working with the Superintendent's Advisory Committee on Technology. This is also a policy that we brought forward to A C I, to get some feedback from them before bringing it to you, so he's going to talk about the specifics within this particular policy.
Thank you, Dr. Natress, and good evening, everybody. As she said, we've had extensive conversations around these policies and have decided to split them into two parts. One is essentially what is required by the Code of Virginia, and that's what I'm presenting tonight, and then I will come back with more details about what we traditionally consider acceptable use. We have the time up here, timeline up here, as Dr. Natress has gone over. Superintendent's Advisory Committee, Technology, worked on this last year, community engagement on November 15th. From that, we drafted a version of the policy. The Superintendent's Advisory Committee and Technology actually drafted a version of the policy that went out for, for further feedback on that. We made further revisions, and it went to A C I, and now we have the final version, which you received in your packet. have the final version, which you received in your packet. Essentially, the Code of Virginia, which mirrors the federal laws, require that we have three primary areas within our policy on internet. The prohibited uses of the internet, we have to prohibit certain uses. We have to filter our content, and we have to provide an internet safety curriculum for our students. It says that we have to have those three elements. So what we did was we went through our current policy, we identified those things, and then we identified things that were not those things. And we removed the elements that were not the elements that were required by the Code of Virginia. And those are the items that we moved into the other policy as appropriate as that work goes forward. This allows us to have our policy, first of all, it's very, very focused, it's much smaller, much easier to read. It complies with the Code of Virginia, so it keeps the division within legal compliance from that perspective. It's really focused on a topic, a very specific topic. So we've actually recommending that we rename it from acceptable use to simply internet, because the policy really is about the internet. It's not about acceptable use of computers, it's about the internet. And so we're recommending renaming the policy to better align with the content of the policy and limiting the content specifically to what's required in the Code of Virginia around internet and then the network devices connected to the internet. That's really what I have. Take all questions you've got.
Excellent.
It's 10 o'clock.
Short presentations. Thank you very much. Let's start over here. Ms., questions? Oh, do we have any speakers?
No speakers.
There are no speakers. Okay. Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah, thank you. Before my questions, I just wanted to note that, you remember we were on the Strategic Planning Committee?
Sure.
You know, way back, the first one, the gold standard.
That's right.
As was Cynthia.
Yes, I remember that.
And Monique was on the Strategic Planning Committee a few years later. So I think my conclusion is that, yeah, the silver standard, yeah. Once you serve on a strategic planning committee, then you get to be able to stay late at, at board meetings.
Yes.
That's a recruitment tool for the next strategic plan. I don't think this is the, the slide deck that I looked at. Can you go back to the last, you only have three slides here?
I have.
Who?
I have four slides, an introduction, the timeline, this slide, and the closing.
All right. There was, I saw something when I was looking at the, what's on the, on board docs, that said something about illegal, illicit, or inappropriate materials. Do we have definitions?
That's the policy itself.
Yeah. Are there definitions of those?
So that's a great question. So there are definitions of those, but they don't exist in this policy. They exist in the other board policies. So your board policies define what's inappropriate to happen in the school system. For example, you have a policy on sexual misconduct, which defines what inappropriate actions are there. The Code of Virginia defines what's illegal. So this policy is simply saying that if it's inappropriate or illegal to do in general, it's also inappropriate, you can't do it using technology. It's very, very simple. So we don't specifically define them here because they're defined in so many other places.
Okay. Okay. I just want to, so that people know what to avoid, they need to know what, you know, specifically to avoid and, and how to find out.
Right, exactly. And that would be the other, all the rest of the governance documents that exist around inappropriate or illegal behaviors in, in general senses.
Okay, thanks. And you had said, or I had read on the previous, on the other slide deck, that our internet safety program is integrated into our instructional programs.
That's correct.
And can you just give a couple of brief examples of that?
Sure. You want it?
I don't need the whole curriculum.
Right, we both have an answer.
We both have an answer, so.
Go ahead.
Right.
So.
I'm here all night, so.
So the internet safety program, at the recommendation of the Superintendent's Advisory Committee on Technology, we selected the Common Sense Media Curriculum several years ago. From that, a combination of instructional technology coordinators and librarians created materials that can be used by classroom teachers or by librarians covering a broad variety of topics such as cybersecurity, such as fair use of materials and copyright and those sorts of ideas. And we really like the Common Sense Media because it's graduated. So there's sort of an appropriate curriculum for K-2, there's appropriate curriculum for grades three, five, six through nine, and nine through 12. That's built into it. We modeled it on that. There's also associated materials for families. So it tells families how to have conversations with a middle school student about things like cyberbullying. And this is how to have that conversation with your kid. And, and we put a link to that in the Digital Advice Handbook, so that the references are available to families. So we adopted that. That's where the curriculum is. It's offered through the schools every single year. It varies. Every school handles a little bit differently. It's designed to be conducted by classroom teachers, but some schools have librarians do it or the ITCs do it.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I have a few more subparts, but I'm going to yield my time on those to other questioners.
All right. Ms. Van Dorn?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for coming to the ACI meeting and presenting this and having a discussion about it. It was, it was a great discussion. They gave you lots of feedback, asked many of the same questions. The one that I carried with me out of the meeting that I know feels a bit of a wrench in works, but I do think, we should think about it, is one of the members, and there were nods, suggested that we have separate policies for students and staff and external people. So I just put that in there because in, having come from the private sector, there was an employee set of policies and other policies. So I just, I, I just raise that because I don't know what happened with that recommendation or whether, I don't know what happened with it.
So that, the idea behind this is this policy that we have here is required to apply to both students and staff. So it's designed to be very, very generic. You can't commit a crime as either a student or a staff member's. The acceptable use content or how we can technically use things with the new VSBA policy model, you might have a policy within Human Resources that applies to the staff members and a separate policy and instruction that might apply to students. So, so that allows us to do that with the new VSBA policy because people will use it differently. And that's, what's acceptable for a kid and what's acceptable for a staff member aren't, aren't the same things. So that's how we're going to structure that.
Ms. Talento?
I just have a quick comment or question. Following up on Mr. Goldstein's mentioning of what is illegal, illicit, or inappropriate materials, I note that we have other APS policies referenced on the bottom. Is that where some of this information is defined? Or is that the, they're disciplinary actions if you actually perform the illegal activity? I'm just curious, the cross-reference.
The reference to disciplinary actions is a follow-up, because one of the policies, the acceptable use policy, or the internet policy speaks to the fact that there are consequences for your actions. And those consequences are defined through the discipline policy, right? But it's really the, it's really all of the governance. If you sort of think about the policies of the organization, you're essentially writing the rules that people need to follow. So that's, that's the governance section.
So then I would suggest that if, if we do have a place in our policies where we explain illegal, illicit, and inappropriate materials, that we just add that to the reference piece on the bottom. Just because if you have students who are looking at this, trying to understand what they can download on their laptop or not, that, that doesn't, I just think that would be helpful.
So I guess that glossary term that you guys had spoke about before with the policy conversation we just had.
That would be.
Define these terms within that glossary.
Right. And, and maybe not for everything, but for ones where you actually have a legal consequence, you know, an actual possible judiciary consequence, I think it'd be important for us to just be very thorough. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
And thank you for all the work you guys did.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we will vote in two weeks.
Two weeks.
All the other information items we're seeing. Yes. All right. Dr. Natress, we have one more information item, which I assume you're presenting to us, the summer school update. Dr. Murphy, did you want to make an introductory comment, or shall we go straight to Dr. Natress?
Why don't we just go straight to Dr. Natress? I think we've reviewed a lot of this already.
Yes. I do want to say thank you for letting us bring this forward. A lot of our work is constantly trying to improve, and it's one of those things where we can say, well, we could do this in the summer of 2019 and wait. However, we have some good ideas that I think will have a really positive impact on our kids and families for this upcoming summer. So we wanted to bring these two quick things forward. I just want to remind you quickly of our summer school mission statement. We actually spoke to this when we talked about summer school fees and did our monitoring report in the fall, that really what we are focused on is providing academic enrichment and skill strengthening opportunities to as many Arlington students as wish to participate. So the two things that I'm bringing forward this evening for action on February 1st really help us to do that. I'm bringing forward two revisions to the work we're currently doing with summer school. One has to do with the fees. We did bring these forward in November and December. And I'm actually bringing it forward again because we have a proposed reduction in our fees for the Career Center enrichment programs. And I'll explain the why behind that in just a moment. I'm also bringing forward to you a shift in dates for the elementary summer school calendar. And we heard from Dr. Murphy earlier tonight about the calendar for 1819 and summer school of 19. One of the things that can be challenging about the calendar is this was approved last March. Then we do summer school in the summer and we start evaluating what worked and didn't work and say, oh, this is another idea we could try, but the calendar's already been decided. And so we have a couple of things that we would like to shift on what was approved last March for the upcoming summer. I'll start with the summer school fees. And one of the things that, as we were putting together the brochure, which we're trying to meet that deadline of February 1, because that's when Parks and Rec get theirs out, and we have that goal of hitting it on the same day. So we'll make it, if we post it that night, right, as soon as you guys either approve or not, so we have that ready to go. But as we were looking at the brochure and we were looking at our enrichment programs, we noticed that we are doing two-week enrichment programs at the elementary level for Math Academy, Fun with Coding and STEM, that's a new one we're offering this summer, and then Summer Laureate. And the full fee for those two-week programs is $280. Well, the Career Center also offers enrichment courses, and this is a conversation we've had about trying to blend all of the Career Center work with our other summer school work. And we've really made a concerted effort to do that this year. And when we were putting it together, noted that the Career Center, which also is two weeks and three hours, is $518. So why the discrepancy, right? It doesn't make sense to have the same length of a program, have that difference of a fee when the cost to run them is not really that different. And so in December, we actually approved it at 518. We're bringing it back to you, asking to make the reduced fee the same as the other elementary enrichment courses to be $280, so that it matches all the way through for our enrichment programs. Okay? So that's the first of the two updates. The second one has to do with the elementary school calendar. So as we've been building our elementary school program over the course of the last several months and really working with staff to build what we want that program to look like, we have several goals in mind. And one of them is to increase learning opportunities for our elementary students and really looking at what are the opportunities that we're providing over the course of the summer for them. Another is to provide equal or greater amount of instructional time for students in our strengthening courses. What I mean by that is an equal or greater amount of time to what they've had in previous summers. We don't ever want to reduce what we're providing to kids who need the support the most. So when I share this calendar with you, I'm going to share a shorter span of weeks so that kids can do additional things, but it's actually the same amount of instructional time because we're expanding the school day. So that was one of the goals. We also talked a lot about ensuring that we're serving breakfast and lunch to our students. We've been serving breakfast for a lot of years, and we have not always been able to serve lunch. So by expanding the school day for some of our students and really looking at the calendar, we can do both of them during the summer. We're also looking at teacher recruitment specifically for strengthening. We really need to recruit our teachers who are strong in OG, LLI, a lot of the other interventions we're using. And so how do we build some of these models and things for elementary summer school that also support teachers? And then finally, how do we provide blocks of time for in-depth study? We really want our kids to be able to immerse for 90 minutes, two hours, in something and really dig into it, which is hard to do with such a short summer school day. So what we've looked at for the calendar and what we're proposing is actually a six-week chunk for elementary summer school. And within that, you see at the top, for four weeks, we would do elementary strengthening from July 9th until August 3rd. Then you see our special education programs as well as our enrichment programs for summer. You can see that Global Village, which is one of our enrichment programs, would also run for four weeks. And then Summer Laureate, Math Academy, and STEM would be two weeks. And then from August 5th, or August 6th, I'm sorry, week five, August 6th through August 17th, we would run the Young Scholars Academy. So that now students actually have six weeks where they could attend summer school. And Mr. Goldstein, if I had your great pointer, I'd be able to show that, your laser, kids could now go, you can do it for me if you want. Summer Laureate, so they go to Summer Laureate for two weeks, then they could go to Math Academy for two weeks, and then they could go to Young Scholars Academy. So we're able to build in a lot of choice. Great job. We're able to build in a lot of choice for our families, right, to be able to say, hey, if your child really wants to do multiple things, go to Math Academy for two weeks, then go to STEM for two weeks, then you can go to Young Scholars. And students who need strengthening can go to strengthening and Young Scholars Academy so that they have this mix of both. And we really think that this provides opportunities for our students as well as our families to have the choice and kind of make the puzzle for summer. So if I can't go the two middle weeks, it's okay. And I'm not paying for one and, you know, messing with all of that. Therefore, we need you to, because the board approves the calendar, to shift the calendar a little bit. So what you see here at the top is what is currently approved for summer school for July and August of 2018. So you have approved the first day of summer school to be July 9th. If you look at it at the top and the bottom, it doesn't change. That stays the same for everybody regardless. What does change is the 27th was listed as the last day of enrichment classes. What I'm asking this evening is that we move that date to the 17th for the last day of elementary summer school enrichment, because that's when Young Scholars will end. And then I did also put on here, it wasn't a part of the other calendar, but just to be clear that the last day of elementary summer school strengthening would be the third. So that program runs the four weeks, and then we have the two other weeks. It doesn't change the 10th, which is the last day of summer school for middle and high school. Those we're proposing stay the same this summer. And then we'll relook at where we are with high school in particular next fall because of the trends we've been seeing when we moved from six weeks to five weeks. So we'll go back and look at high school next fall, which does mean when we approve the calendar in two weeks for the summer of 18, I may be coming back to you next November and saying, can we tweak the summer school part of it? Because I think it is really important at the end of every summer to look at where we are, revamp our programs, and then maybe make some of those changes. And not make them two weeks before we're trying to finish the catalog. So I do apologize for that part, but those are the shifts. So what we're asking for board action two weeks from now is that we reduce that Career Center enrichment fee from 518 to 280 so that aligns with the other two-week enrichment programs. And then we shift that date of enrichment offerings from July 27th to August 17th, and the last day of strengthening from August 10th to August 3rd. I will take any questions that you have.
First, I must ask if we have speakers?
No speakers.
Unless Tana wants to jump in on that one, we're good.
Seeing none. Let's ask if board colleagues have comments or questions. Start over here this time. Ms. Talento?
I just want to thank you for bringing that to us. I think it's great that we were able to add a week to that. And I know from when my kids were in elementary school, finding camps those last three weeks that were affordable are just the most difficult thing. And as a working parent, I'm so grateful that APS can provide yet another opportunity for our kids to be in a learning environment that our kids can afford. So thank you for the efforts and all the work you did to do both of those things. And I really appreciate it. So thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Van Dorn?
Dr. Natress, I want to thank you for being creative, for listening to your staff, to listen to the community. I know you've got a lot of feedback on this. Summer school has been something that many of us have wanted to really address for some time. And you not only questioned it, but you came back with improvements, and I really appreciate that. Thank you for just stopping for a moment and bringing us up to speed and letting us bring the community up to speed. It takes a little more time to do that, but I think it's good for the community to know that you it's good for the community to know that you're really looking at this, listening to the community, listening to staff. I think people really want to take advantage of the summer. I think students would like to be doing extensions in the summer, adding additional courses, enjoying their summer, and you're letting that happen. And I just really want to thank you because it's creative, it's flexible, you're listening to your staff, and you listen to the community, and I really appreciate that. And not assuming that everything is set in stone. So thank you.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, thank you. This looks very interesting, and I'm obviously inclined to support it. I'm confused about the slide eight, the way slide eight crosswalks with, yeah, that one. So enrichment offerings, elementary strengthening, and if you go back another slide to another one, that one, it's hard for me to tell which are the strengthening, which are the enrichment. You know, if you could put in a little bit more delineation there when you bring it back.
And elementary strengthening is the only strengthening one that's up there.
Oh, everything else is?
Special education, but everything else is enrichment. So you've got the first two rows.
So these two rows, okay, are strengthening and everything else is?
Everything else is enrichment.
Okay. Okay, that helps. Can you go to the next slide, please? No, the next one? No, go back. I don't know where it is.
What are you looking for?
Slide five.
This one?
That one. So equal to or greater than what?
Than what students have had in our strengthening courses before. One of the things as we were looking at the calendar was to make sure they didn't lose instructional time, they either met it or gained it. So we increased the day because we know we're decreasing that strengthening block by a bit of time. So the day is actually longer, so they don't lose any minutes.
Okay, thank you. And so I have to ask, we're reducing the fees from five hundred something to 280 and extending the time, which would probably allow more students to take those two-week blocks of different enrichment courses. Is there going to be a budgetary impact because of this?
So the reduction in fees for the Career Center means we may subsidize the Career Center courses a bit more, but their courses are actually, I think we're moving those from, because they're not strengthening, from three and a half hours to three so that we could also provide transportation, which we haven't been able to do at the Career Center before. So we've done some finagling of the schedule to do that. So it should come out budget neutral. We're also hoping that we have more families who apply to the Career Center who haven't before for a couple of reasons. One, it aligns really nicely with us. One of the things that we did was we had had some three-week enrichment programs, some two-week programs, some four-week programs, some five-week programs. And so it was really hard for families to be able to say, I'm going to do this two-week one, this two-week one, and this two-week one. And now the Career Center also matches this calendar, and so they'll be able to increase their enrollment in some of those courses because they now fit within the puzzle of summer school. And so our hope is that by increasing enrollment, even though we've decreased the fees, we should be able to offset those costs. Because the course costs the same to run, whether there are eight kids in it or the cap of twenty, for some of them because of OSHA requirements. So if we can get twenty in there, we've doubled the courses, we cut fees in half, comes out the same budget-wise.
And you mentioned transportation. Are you, are you talking about charging for transportation?
No.
So that would be another, that would have more budget impact. Okay, I'll be anxious to see that. All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Grady.
I just wanted to also say thank you so much for your creativity. And one of the things I really enjoyed hearing about was the opportunity for students to get lunch. I think that that's really a wonderful benefit for many of our students. I'm also very excited to see the schedule because I think a kid could get excited about, oh, well, I get to do, you know, math, but then I can also do STEM. And then if I want to go to the Young Scholars Academy, so I think for kids, it kind of keeps things changing up and different. And I appreciate you aligning those so that kids can enjoy a variety of subjects over the summer. And I also think that there are a lot of kids who need strengthening, who might like the idea that they can get their summer school over in a shorter period of time. So I think that this is a really good proposal, and I appreciate you bringing it.
Thank you.
You can sort of tell we're all parents of children of a certain age, where we look back at these programs and go, oh, this would be so cool. I'm sure you've heard me say before that my own sons both took about ten years of those enrichment classes at the Career Center. And I remember when the fees doubled. So we're going back to those original fees. That's about what they were when my kids were in like third grade. And a lot of kids took those courses. I mean, the law of demand really does work. With a lower fee, there will be more students taking advantage of those courses, and it's going to be fantastic. So really, really appreciate that. I know Ms. Van Dorn and I were just saying, we've been talking about wanting to lower those fees for as long as we've been on the board. So we're really happy to see that. So it'll probably go through.
Okay.
I'm going to predict. Okay. Hopefully, anything else? And let me just, yeah, how many items do you have? Okay, board members, is there any new business? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.